Okay, I just.
Need to plug this in. I work with AIs. They can say do the phone all day. And they they program A I after be sincere. Like they program them to be like sigh and hesitation and it's. Like why, what's the point? The whole point of having a robot is it's not gonna be doing a good mission for you? Yeah, they programmed the robots to be sad.
All right.
I was gonna say they are. They are realized, decided. Cat.
Here is a ball and the skip by. If your superintendent was. Viewed by the board, is that being standard procedure that it's not read aloud? If so, will be made available online. Not all of the other. All.
So it's online and.
I have an extension. Well, because now there's audio.
Okay.
Yes.
Cindy, do you want to have an extension? It would be good if we could get that laptop back over to them for the audio.
Other things.
Hmm. Or would any show some people.
Is there teacher voices? Alright, so until if Cindy can find an extension for it, I can bring the audio closer to you guys, but until then.
Yes.
But we're we're live, we're we're not live, but we're recording. So I am gonna um. Yeah, we lost cat.
Okay, so welcome back, everybody. Sorry for the difficulties. Um, in case we lost it before the last vote, Policy Committee will now be Victoria and Lisa. We're discussing Finance Committee at this time. And. And the nomination for the two. Um, I do believe that both Doug and Ben and Doug have interest in Finance Committee. Do I have a nominee?
I'll nominate Jonathan and Doug for the Finance Committee.
Beautiful. Do I have second for that? My second for that? Any other discussion around that? All in favor? Okay. So Jonathan and Doug. Okay, the next committee is the Student Retention drop out committee, drop out prevention committee. Um, and I nominate Christopher for that one.
Sure.
Do I have any discussion around Christopher being on the Student Protection Committee?
What, like terrible is in Jersey.
Yep.
There is. Uh, thoughts on it? Simply that, yeah. You ought to finish. And yeah, I'm sure there are a number of causes and a number of um. Uh, you know, things that impact retention, but uh, I I it's not something I've delved into deeply before, but um, but. Yeah, I think fighting important. And it seems would be an issue here as well.
Then I would say it may come beyond a need. If you're gonna be out in the community trying to get a feel. Why this is happening, maybe we should call it the community wins.
Well, that would be.
Yeah, that's. Bringing into the Community Engagement Committee that has been proposed. So you mean not that there has to be a.
And.
Distinction.
Also, the dropout prevention because it is new and is something that has been mandated by the state for us. I think we have to see what those guidelines are before we branch them. So it is a fairly new.
Standing committee, still use community engagement as I add on.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think you'd be great at it. You're a great listener.
What?
What? All right, did I, did we vote on that? All in favor? Yeah. So Christopher.
Motion.
Motion for the Victoria motion. No, the.
Well, it's Victoria Christopher for the findings. Uh, the drop off ready, I think was, I'm keeping notes for.
Oh. I could officially motion to nominate Christopher and Rob our committee.
She seconded it.
Yeah. I think that's what it was. Okay, sorry.
Nice.
That wasn't.
Keep notes for.
Thank you. All right, um, so we have dropout prevention. Now, Safety Committee. Assuming Jonathan would like to be learning that, I'm thinking you tell us why you would like to reason.
Well, yeah, I was just the SRO here before, had a background in security, risk assessments, quality audits, law and control. Um, I'm an analyst instructor, I was the instructor here, taught all of our teachers and staff, accurate shooter training. Uh, full time police officer now, some military before that, so. It's all world's safety, public, public safety and like I said, risk assessment, stuff like that, so.
Right. Do I have a motion for Jonathan for the Safety Committee?
Cindy, I got notes for you.
Christopher is motioning.
I'll second it.
Do I have a second? Doug is seconding. Any other discussion around Jonathan being? All right, all in favor of Jonathan being on the Safety Committee? Okay, now we have the Ad Hoc Engagement Committee. Um. Jonathan, you gave us a quick rundown of what you envisioned that to be?
Just that getting community engagement and community involvement and actually. Holding these meetings where we, outside of this hour, two hours, I want to turn once a month, I'd actually like to engage with parents and students, staff.
Yeah.
Business owners.
Now. Do you see that as being? Because it's ad hoc, are we going to be assigning? Somebody to it? Are we going to rotate in and out as a board so that we all? Have opportunity to discuss with the public? What, how did you envision that?
It's just an idea, so.
Okay.
This opening discussion.
Does anyone else have any ideas around something like that? Yes.
I have questions about.
Okay.
Um, would it supplement the work of this board or would it be doing something different?
Well.
And then how would it interact with the boosters, the pie and the parent advisory group? Or is it something different or, and then who? Who organizes meetings and sets the agenda?
Well, I I would think that it's an ad hoc committee to gather information for this board. They they, well, they get information, you know what I mean? And they bring that information back to the board, so they they have a feel for the, what the temperament of the community is. And what can we do as a group to better our position in the public's eye? You 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 know what I mean? We couldn't set policy, you know, any of that stuff. I would just, I would think that it would just be have a meeting, listen to people's concerns. Like hopefully have some good comments. This is working, we like this, that sort of thing. Um, just. You know. Sort of an informal type of format.
Okay, so can I make a suggestion and? Can? It sounds like. Both of you have ideas on this, can you come together and pull together a formal concept?
Table.
And table it till the next meeting.
Yeah.
Because it's an ad hoc committee, so we don't have to appoint.
Yeah.
And come up with a plan.
Organized thought, organized mission type.
Yeah. Absolutely.
What the intent is.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Me rambling right now.
Right.
Engagement, but we put together something.
Sorry, it does seem that, uh, maybe I'm convoluted in point, but but yeah, we've got these entities that are bringing the information. And then we're creating another organization to come out and collect the information, how much implication is there and what?
Well, well, maybe it's out to those. That's, that's why I'd like to see this fleshed out a little bit more, because if we have those other groups already, maybe this is an outreak. To them as well, does that make sense?
I don't know, the the board's getting that information from those groups.
And.
We get from department heads within the school, that's what reports we get, but I, I don't hear from the boosters, we don't hear from pie unless we ask for something.
Oh, yeah, well, I did it with a pie.
Yeah, we we ask they come present something.
Yeah.
Um, but this would give like you said, this give somebody the opportunity to go out and reach out to those organizations and brainstorm, and then.
Yeah.
Bring that back formally, kind of like a budget, when a finance update at the beginning.
Yep.
Alright, so what'd you learn on your community involvement? I talked to pie, I talked to boosters, this is what we learned, this is what we talked about. You know, just so we can get that information pulled in here, because I like to hear more about what the boosters are doing, what's pie is doing and what everybody's doing.
Alright, so what I'm, I'm going to motion that we table this and put it on the next agenda. Yeah, this is something we want to discuss, come with a more fleshed out concept.
Yeah.
So that we can then discuss it.
More definitive mission.
Right, absolutely.
I mean, just add that those meetings are public, so like if you really wanted to know what's going on at boosters or pie, they're begging for members. So they would love it if you came.
Well, that's what we do, we go, we people meet. Um, people and try to, you know, get them involved. In a positive way.
Yeah. Get that all fleshed out and then beautiful. All in favor of us tabling that and discussing it next time as an agenda item?
You didn't have a second.
I did.
She motioned, I seconded.
Thank you.
Alright. I think we have talked about committee appointments. Did I miss anything? Um, MSBA delegate. So Kim, could you please give us? A rundown of that and then?
Um, so um, the main school boards, I pulled up some info here, the main school boards association um. Is. The mission of the association is to enhance the education of all students in main public schools by identifying and serving the needs of local school boards through board development, information and support services. And by advocating for all main public schools at the state and national level. So MSBA would like a delegate from every school board in the state and they have an annual conference. Um, they probably have more than that, I believe you become the MSBA delegate. Um, you'll be invited to meetings, you'll get newsletters, um. The purpose of the association is to serve and represent school boards, um, to promote and maintain local control of public schools, to promote closer cooperation among individual school boards. To represent the combined interest of school boards in the legislative process. Um, to cooperate with other agencies in the state interested in the improvement of public education, to provide information for school boards and general public about the needs. Um, and the accomplishments of public schools and to sponsor, develop and encourage those projects and programs that promote better public education in Maine. So if you wanted to, MSBA, um, it's like M S S A and the M P A, it's um.
So when is that?
Governmental organization.
When is their big conference? Thank you.
Ah, let's see. I. If they do it annually, I would say it's in the fall, it's in October.
October?
Yeah.
Is it on a weekend or during the week?
It would be an all day Saturday event.
They said. No date yet.
For twenty twenty five, we, no, I can try and look it up for you.
Just because I don't want to say, I would do it if.
They meet, they meet, alright, emails in my school email.
Yes, they haven't, but they have an annual conference.
Right, but do they meet monthly, alright, like you're the delegate, could you go to the monthly meeting if you wanted to? Like, I'm trying to think of the time commitment it might be for somebody.
Right.
Probably be as involved as you want to be, or you just go to the annual conferences.
I think it's largely an annual conference, um, but I don't know, I'm not certain. Um. I can find out more information from you. I think that if you're interested in policy and if you're interested in having a voice at the table, um, about what MSBA legislative legislative supports do. There, there are people, they go and they testify in Augusta, their conferences in Augusta and Civic Center, um. We get reports from MSBA and M S S A at the um, Mico Superintendent's Association Group. And they're often about legislation and what the associations are um, pushing for in terms of legislation, in terms of bills on the floor.
I mean, I think it would be a great thing to be involved in for any one of us.
Yeah.
Um. Like I said, I just don't want to say. I don't want any of us to say, oh, I'll do it and then not be able to go to that weekend because we have something else.
Is there a timeline on when we need a delegate? Like they need to know this week or can we wait till?
They email you about it.
Table that and all go research MSBA. Till next meeting and then come back and say, okay, I researched it, these are their meetings, these are their times.
Look it up. I suspect we're gonna be meeting again before August, so. I could find out.
Now we, now we could.
Pretty quickly and let you know more details about it.
Yeah, if everybody wants to do their own research, I might clearly say, I want no part of that, or somebody might say, I do want to be, I'd love doing that, so.
Yes, for the past couple of years, uh, Dina did it.
Mm hmm.
Um, last year, I guess we didn't even have one.
Okay.
So.
And now when?
Have to participate in MSBA, you also don't have to be a member of MSBA.
And folks, like, um, their fall conference in twenty twenty five is our February twenty third, it's twenty four.
Is that MS, M A or MS?
MSBA, Main School Boards Association.
Oh.
I unfortunately, can I do that as I will be having a baby?
Yes.
I'd be too. So I don't.
And I'm sorry, you said it was October what?
Twenty third and twenty.
Okay, so. That's a Thursday, Friday.
M S M A and MSBA are dovetailed, they work together like this.
Because they're doing it all at the same.
Yeah. Um. M S S A is also under the same umbrella.
Your teacher's pretty good.
Um, okay, so it also looks like it's around availability on the twenty third and twenty fourth for everybody. I would like, I think we should table it to our next meeting. And that way people can look into it, see what it is about, see if they're interested in it, and then we will make that. Discussion.
Whether or not you decide to be a delegate.
Yeah.
I think that I would encourage everybody to go to the conference because there are a ton of workshops there, um, that you will learn. Um, things about boardmanship.
Um, it's conference with old staff, it's a, I love conferences.
You'll get the T-shirt.
You get T-shirt. It's like, let's go.
Alright.
I'll motion to table that.
You motioned to table that, do I have a second for motioning to table that until we meet again so we can figure it all out? Second right there for Christopher, all in favor? Oh, discussion about it, I think we just did, right? Alright, all in favor? Okay. So we will table that. Alright, housekeeping, meeting times and dates.
The school committee calendar in your draft.
School committee calendar.
So I don't know if you want to couple those things together.
Yes, I do.
Or refer to the draft while you have this.
Yes, because we maybe came to accept those. I think was the request around some of that. Um, alright, so we have the school committee calendar, everybody on that page flipping? Can I grab my calendar out here? Okay, so. Obviously, tonight is our July meeting. The twenty third will be the special town meeting. Twenty third. Why, I'm on August already. Um, yes, the twenty third is the special town meeting. Um, town meeting to vote on the warrant and articles that is.
It'll be on some Tuesday.
It's then August pretty much starts on all the regular meetings again.
Yes, so August starts our regular meetings.
We actually have a date.
Do we?
Uh, yeah, um, for the, the vote.
Yes.
It'll be on September fourth.
September fourth.
Yeah.
For the, for the budget?
Yeah.
Where is the two step budget process?
Meeting vote.
First is the town meeting, which is July twenty third, and then within forty five days, we have to have the budget validation referendum, which is the secret ballot ballot. The town runs that, but um, town manager told me today that that will be on.
Tuesday the fourth.
September fourth, no, it won't be on a Tuesday.
Thursday.
It's unusual.
This is unusual.
Well, I know that, but I'm just saying. No, I never wondered what's.
Number of other things.
You know?
No, there will be nothing else about, it'll be one question. Do you approve the amount at the budget validation or the budget special town meeting? Yes or no, and the amount won't, won't be on the question.
Alright.
And it will cost us about thirty five hundred dollars to do this.
Alright, so now let's go back to, we're all on Tuesdays here in August, September.
The rest of the year.
The rest of the year. Now, I know that there were, there was concern you, Tuesdays don't necessarily work for you after.
Tuesdays don't work, it's the worst night of the week for me in general. Uh, Mondays are horrible, Mondays are Mondays, nobody wants to do a meeting on Monday. Uh, but I, couple reasons, one, I work. Patrol in the town on Sunday through Wednesdays, or Sunday through Wednesday to eight AM, so. I get out of work at four o'clock on Tuesdays and the way things are going, at least this past six months, I'm getting stuck over for. Serious calls that are happening in town. Um, I get, and I understand, that's just my one job, we all have a job, we all have accommodations for the meetings. Also have three kids, two of them play basketball, soccer, hockey, football, and almost all of their games are Tuesday, Thursday nights, so. I come to meetings as much as I can, if it's like the last one I wasn't at, it was like a sub meeting, but um, we had a championship game, so I also was a coach, so I had to be there. Um, so Wednesday nights is the best night of the week for me, but I'm one person, so I just want to have a discussion about what is in the week.
I don't have preference any night.
Wednesday does not work for me in the summertime, but come fall it does.
Summertime's more flexible for me as long, as far as everything else, because.
Now, we have to also ask school. From your standpoint, are Wednesdays, are any of other days available? I know that school has things that go on in the evening as well.
I think Wednesdays would be fine, we also have flexibility if the space wasn't available, we could, if the elementary school.
Okay.
Um. We could all, or our meetings in a large classroom with a.
Good.
Be here.
Okay.
Appreciate you, Wednesday.
Other.
Our Wednesday.
All the students, our Wednesday versus.
No, I don't.
So summertimes for you, what's that window, is it July, August?
If July and August, once Labor Day's over, I'm good.
So if we did July and August, we could, whatever, we make it on Wednesday nights, except for July and August, move back Tuesday nights?
That would be, that would work for me, does anyone?
Drop it that way, that for ten months a year, we do Wednesday nights and those, those two months a year, we do Tuesday nights.
Well.
Just because we have to update, if it works out, we'd have to update the policy and the website and all of that, what nights the meetings are.
Mm hmm. Does anyone have any other?
I can make Tuesday nights work, and if that's only two Tuesdays out of the year, if I get stuck on an emergency or something like that, I'd just call it, it'd be like your desk if I get stuck.
So basically, we, Tuesday, September ninth, we could go to September tenth.
Yeah, so September, October, November does.
And go to tenth after that.
Yeah, so from.
I already have them on the tenth of March.
Yeah, so from September.
Yeah, so we just move everything ahead to Wednesdays, one day.
So the September ninth to the June ninth, we're good for Wednesdays?
I would think.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns around that?
Well, Jonathan raised the other point, we'll need to revise our policy.
Okay.
I spent some calls and says.
Yes, it does.
It does say second Tuesday.
Do the second Wednesday.
It's not for July and August. Here, but.
Right.
It's a, it's a board meeting, so it's whatever works for the boards, but I also like, see what works for the public too.
Okay.
Um.
So just, just so you know, Victoria, you, you can't have, if you do this, you can't have the baby on Wednesday.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let him.
Alright, does that also work then for Tuesday budget workshop, uh, Thursday budget workshop, Tuesday, Tuesday?
Are we gonna change those to Wednesday, Friday? Or we could do Wednesday, Thursday?
Well, those are, those are in January, and those are budget workshops.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you?
Yeah, we don't have to have a new budget.
Um. Yeah, I, I would more Wednesday nights for the, just for the standard school board meetings.
Okay.
School committee meetings, because that works better, just have a set Wednesday.
Mm hmm.
Um. Most times I can make an arrangement, like I said, I get out of work at four, so it works at four PM anyways, on Tuesdays, we're four to four, so. Um, I can make, like if we needed to hold a budget workshop on Tuesday or Friday or Wednesday, whenever it was, like, I'll make it, I'll make it work.
Is it?
If it's gonna be easier than changing everything around.
Does it work to link it to a Wednesday or?
Will then be Wednesday, Thursday?
Family meeting?
No, the budget meeting.
Well, it's, right now it's Tuesday, Thursday, but it's, it's Tuesday, Thursday, because it gives you like a middle day to get questions answered and stuff before you come back for the Thursday one, or can we do it back to back?
No, we could do it back to back. Because if you look the Tuesday, Thursday, it's divided up in by departments.
Okay, so those are those questions and answers for the.
This group of department heads, the first night, this group of departments, the second night.
Yeah.
So we do Wednesday, Thursday and Sunday.
Yep. Just Thursday, is Thursday okay for you? Are you?
Thursday is not generally great for me because that's um, the day that I work in Portland, I have a hybrid schedule, I work in town in my office one day of the week, and it's usually Thursday. Um, and you know, I get out of work at five, and it's, it's difficult to get back here in a, in an hour. Um, especially during like the summer, um, it's possible, but I.
Well, this would be winter travel too.
In a manner that Jonathan probably not.
Well, this is, this, the only Thursday, is that the only Thursday, the only Thursday is that budget?
Two, yeah.
January.
Yeah, and one or two, once or twice a vacation, Thursday meeting is fine, um, but not as if it's.
I mean, I'm okay doing.
Yeah, we do six thirty, is that alright for everybody?
I can also have a consideration on that Tuesday, do it Tuesday, Wednesday, instead of Wednesday, Thursday. So.
Okay.
So I, it's, it's just set that way, Tuesday, Thursday, that's when the budget workshops are, so that would make it Wednesday, Thursday, I can also make Tuesday, Wednesday work. It's a budget workshop.
Year.
Right.
Right.
And I, I don't want to make you rush back from Portland.
Once in a while is fine, um, because I can swap my days in office or whatever, um, it's just as a, like if it were to be the regular standard meeting, that would be.
Would you be able to get here by six thirty, would that loosen it up for you? So why don't we?
The lizard gets.
Okay, and if it's a blizzard, we're gonna cancel anyway, so. Even though I could walk, I'm not coming out that. Alright, so um, let's do that Thursday, keep it the Thursday, but do it to six thirty.
Good.
And then otherwise, so as it stands right now. The motion is to change the policy. Or change, yeah, we are going to change the policy, but the motion is to change our meeting nights from. A regular meeting nights from Tuesdays to Wednesdays.
I think Wednesday.
To second, second Tuesdays to second Wednesdays.
On only for the months of September through June, and then July through August, it's second Tuesdays.
Yes. Do I have a motion for that?
Make motion.
Second.
Second, do we have any other discussion or concerns? Public, do you have any, any concerns around those changes? Okay, all in favor? Okay, so now we need to remove, to change that policy, that will be our first thing to do.
And we're gonna have to schedule, if it's not in our schedule, there'll be a policy committee meeting for. July.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we do. Right.
Yeah.
And then we are also going to change any of the Tuesday meetings, any of the special Tuesday meetings to Wednesdays.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion to change special Tuesday meetings to Wednesdays?
I will make a motion to change this special. Tuesday meetings to Wednesday.
Do I have a second? Any other discussion around this? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
It'll follow that all of the Finance Committee meetings that occur right before. This meeting will shift to Wednesday.
Wednesdays. So that's probably good that we changed it, because if you do get stuck, you wouldn't be able to make it to Finance Committee meetings. Because that would be like the fourties.
Alright.
Um.
When did that goes? Three nine?
Two nine point six.
Uh.
Yeah, the town meeting.
Actually, yeah, that'll be interesting, that means that um. The last meeting for this school board will be on Wednesday, May thirteenth. Because then the June meeting will be after the vote. And so we will have a June meeting with three members or two members, who's running up this year?
Just Victor.
Running out.
Yeah, no, everybody else.
The bus are on.
Okay. So that will. It's just a thing, yeah.
Alright.
Are we good?
Good.
Yeah, that is interesting. We'll have to look at how that takes down. I mean, do we want to do it September through May and then?
What does make a difference on that?
August?
That just puts our meeting the day after the vote.
Yeah, but this way the standing board votes this night.
Right.
New board votes this night.
So if instead, if we just keep that last one.
Validation vote, that's the town vote.
Right, but the.
So the town, the town vote and then we meet the next day?
Well.
Yes.
Oh, same. Oh, same.
Yeah, we can't change the town, the votes, so we'll be.
The town vote is gonna be on Tuesday, June ninth regardless.
They go vote at the.
So does it, does it matter if we have a meeting that night after?
It doesn't.
Don't work, we just do it Wednesday.
It's just, but traditionally, and we don't need to stick with tradition, just like the last night of the, of the school committee. Because then the new school committee starts the next month, and it gives the new school committee members a month to get sworn in.
Yes.
The other thing too is though, if we run into an issue like we did. This year where the budget didn't pass, we can at least set up meetings to start working on a budget. Cuz we'll be a totally new board. With another member.
On Tuesday.
Last part, what you said.
What I'm saying is, if the budget doesn't pass next year. It'll be the, the, the committee going forward will be dealing with it, will be aware of it that night, and they can, you know.
Well, they won't, because well, that is the day we're voting in the vote.
We don't get the results.
That's what I mean.
If we leave it, we leave it on Wednesday.
Leave it on Wednesday, then we know the result of that meeting. Nothing will make.
But at least we can say, okay, now we know we need to schedule a budget meeting in two weeks, or have the ten days really.
All right. Okay.
Wait, oh, you know, the night.
Sort of even. We'll even it. Very good. All right, um, unless anyone else has. Victoria, man. Oh, yes. All right, any other housekeeping at this time? All sets? Yeah. We wait for her, continue onward, we're still.
Forum.
All right, um. Next part up, futures of West Castle School Committee update, um, I put myself down to update, but Doug can also throw his two cents worth in because he is also on that committee. We have been meeting, um. Reports have come in now, they will be put out to everybody, put together, and then put out to everybody, I do believe they're out. To the community already, but, um, now they need to be consolidated into one. Um, report that's going to be given to the select board. The, uh, three things that were discussed at Futures of West Castle School, one committee was, um. Tuitioning out our high school students and closing our high school, that was one scenario that was looked at. One scenario that was looked at was, um, what they call status quo, but it's basically keeping our school, high school as it is, and. Trying to bring in new high school students from elsewhere, and continuing to upgrade our school. And the third one was a consolidation option, which would be working with another school that is also. Having less and less students and trying to do some kind of combination with them. Um. At this time, we, there's been a lot of discussion around all of those things. Um, I mean, status quo is one that we're already working on, so I don't feel like we need to look into that more, that's a work in progress. Um, tuitioning out is something that if the select board recommends that, then we will look at what that takes to. At that point, it will be handed to the school board, and we'll have to make some decisions, um, the final piece, the, um, one that. Seemed to be. I'm not gonna say the most viable, more viable, was, um, consolidation. And so what I would like to do at this time from the school board, because whatever the decision that the select board makes. Ultimately, it gets thrown back to us as a school board to go through that, so I would like some background information before we get hit with that. So what I would like to do, what I propose is that we ask him to look into. That, what that consolidation thing looks like, just fact finding, we're not entering any agreements, we're not, but I want to. Be reflective of what's happened in the past. And, um, talk about. Have her look into some of those options and what is out there, I know there are some state options as well, and I'd like to get some. Facts and figures from her talking to other superintendents, like, does anyone have any?
Well, from my perspective on that committee. We, um, all three options can be problematic in their own way. And maybe by starting this process here, we'll be prepared when the, when the selectmen finally issue. You know, their directive from their perspective.
Yeah.
We're prepared to answer that, no matter which way they go.
Yep.
And, um, and then maybe once. We answer that, we can, as a board can. Take a stance as to which way we'd like to go.
I agree.
Um, and of course, it's important that we keep everybody involved, so that, you know, is what might work. For you might not work for us, you know, how do we meld those?
Right.
Those situations, so they're palatable, uh, but ultimately, what's best for the students in the school.
Right. So I would like more information at this time, I'm not looking for any set direction, or, um. It just seemed to me as we were looking at things, that some of the things with us either, as we are now working forward. Some of those things we're looking at, where do we place kids, if not? And then the final thing of pulling them together, and I would like information around that, so that when they make some kind of decisions and recommendations. We have information and feedback to then be able to move forward in some way.
And so the future of the schools committee isn't making recommendations, they only provide information, select board is then going to. State their preference?
Oh, they may not, they may, they may kick everything up to us and say. Hmm, what do you think? I mean, they, they may not ask anything other than, would you take a look at this and come back, you know, as a school board? What do you think our best option is? I mean.
You don't have any authority.
So.
So only the school.
Right, and that's why.
Ultimately, it's our decision.
It's us.
But we also have to keep into account that these, these, they're speaking for the taxpayer.
Right.
So, you know, the taxpayer ultimately is our boss.
So they are, they're gonna be handing us, um, ideas and record of things, but I would like us to be fully aware and in the loop. Before that comes to us, so that we can then make informed decisions.
Don't, don't we have access? I mean, it sounded like you were.
I.
Kim had provided a question, but haven't you been shoveling all that stuff to them?
It has, they have it, and yes, we will be getting it as well, but there are some. I would like him to look at. What the steps, well, also what the steps are for the next few things, because that's part of it too. Is if it gets handed to us, we're gonna have to take steps, so I wanna know what those, what are those steps? If they're gonna say consolidation, okay, how do, what are we gonna do to do that? If it's tuitioning out, what are we gonna do to do that? There are steps that will be. School specific, and not the overview that the Futures of West Castle School has, and I would like to know what those steps look like.
And it wasn't part of the charge of the future of the schools committee to outline at least some of those steps, or?
Some of them, but it's, it's bigger picture, and I would like to, if we get charged with this. And making a decision, I would like to know what we're hitting the ground running with. So that's just. My thought process around that is, when I heard that, okay, well, after we do this and put this report together, we'll be handing it back to the school board for action, and I went. Oh. So I, I would like to have us have some background before we are asked to start implementing. Does that make sense to everybody? Is that?
Ultimately, it's our decision.
Right.
They'll send it up to us and maybe make a recommendation, we prefer this option. We as a board may, you know, disagree with that.
Right.
And we can state the reasons why. Um, but at the end of the day, um, the onus is on us.
Right.
To basically run the school system.
Right.
Well, she runs it, we, we just direct her.
And that's why I would like that information.
Yeah.
Gathered, what are those?
The public and, and the people, the people on the, the select board, they just need to know our mindset and why, and the information. They're gonna give us the information that they get from the future of the schools committee, they're gonna look at it, make the recommendation and pass it up to us.
Right.
And so, you know, then we'll have to digest that and try to figure out what's the best course to go with the schools.
Yep.
So, not necessarily Jermaine, but didn't you all, um, each take one of the three?
Yep.
Positions?
Yes.
So what, I'm curious, which?
Well, the report, well, I was on closing the school committee.
Okay.
As was I.
Okay.
Not closing the school per se, but tuitioning out.
Right, right, okay.
You know, when you, when you downsize your student population, you, 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 then you run into a building issue on the opposite end of too many kids, you don't have enough to fill the building. Then you had to decide cost versus, versus, um, you know, positive results. You know, that's right now, it's just basically, um, we need more students. And, you know, those options are out there, and I'm sure Kim's, you know, delved into trying to make that happen.
Well, so at least of the three options, we've got expertise on one of.
Well, I wouldn't call it expertise, but yeah, we, we were through the process.
Yes, we have done the research around that, we just. I.
And when we were having our discussions, I would certainly, you know, recommend that we invite one of each of the other group to come in.
Absolutely.
You know, and why they found it the way they did, and what reasoning they used.
Yep. And I'm more concerned with process, what would that, what are those processes gonna look like? Not just the recommendation and what, in, I wanna know, I want fact finding around what are those processes around those things? So that we know what we are dealing with if it gets handed to us. That's.
Yeah, I took care of that.
Those are my thoughts on it anyway. So is everybody comfortable with us asking Kim to look at what those processes are, so that we are ready if and when we get handed that?
Yeah, I'm.
I think it's smarter.
Well, we'll just be better prepared for when, when they. Kick it up, and they may have a preferred option they want us to look at, we'll look at all of them, obviously, but. They may, they may send up with nothing, just say.
All right, so are we ready to move on from that one?
I am.
All right, distribution of school materials. Spoon for me the handbook.
The same one from last year? Where has been changes? Is this, is this the same one from last year, or changes?
Stuff like that, um, but yeah, it's basically the same, so on the, uh, on August twelfth, we have. Which will be a Tuesday, um, at five o'clock, we've got a workshop scheduled, and Eileen King from MS. The MSMA is gonna come and do the training, um, and so. If you could overview your handbook prior to that, there's a couple of policies in here that are relevant to school. Uh, committee members, all of our policies are available on the websites, um. I don't know if we need to go over this now, you can do our training scheduled, um. This meeting calendar will get updated based on our new discussions.
Said, MSMA?
Yeah, I mean, school management.
And association, is that like a collaboration of superintendents and board members, so BA is board?
BA and MSSA, we were just talking about them earlier, um, I would call them a non-governmental organization, um, that. Is organized to, um, speak for the interests of public schools, state of me, and, um. They are the people who provide the sample policies that we adopted, provide the trainings that we, um, adhere to, and, uh.
MSBA, I mean, yeah, MSBA doesn't do that, they don't do the training for school members.
But it's, um, usually Eileen King is the person who does the trainings, and she's MSMA, means school management association.
And so this.
So last year, we had our training with an attorney from Drummond Woodson, this year, we'll hit the MSMA, in my mind, I was thinking we go every other year. You know, MSMA attorney, MSMA attorney.
And so the overview of this, um. This workshop, this, um, training, what? What are we looking at, looking at? What are we looking at, looking at?
Uh, she will ti- tell you what the role of school committee members are, um, she will describe to you what your, uh, responsibilities are as school committee members. As a group, um, what you may or may not do, um, in terms of meetings. Uh, you, you, she will provide us the training that we wish, so she already asked if she could talk to, um, me and the chair. Prior to the training, um, there could be other things that we're interested in learning, um, what is the public complaint procedure of play? What, what is it, what is a grievance of play, where, what's the board's involvement in discipline issues in school, what's the board's involvement in? Employee matters, um, so she can go over all of those things for us, yeah. And so I, um. I'll schedule probably phone call for the three of us.
Okay. So if anyone has any questions, in the meantime, please let me know, so I can ask them.
Yeah. And she'll, she's planning to design a one hour presentation for us, um.
Beautiful.
We have to update the school calendar anyways, cuz the Wednesday changes, last year's had this committee dates on sometimes in there too. Is there a way to add those on here, or like? Policy committee, finance committee, just so it's, everybody's aware, so you're forgetting September, when it's like, I wanna go. Obviously, if you're not on the committee, can't participate, but if I wanted to go and listen to the policy committee, I'd know, I'd remember what day, time it was. Better than if I didn't have it there.
Yes.
No guarantee I remember it, better than I, I didn't have it in front of me.
Yeah, and also the other standing committees, I can insert our new meetings like this.
Beautiful, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Perfect.
All right. Okay, so we've done that, we've done, and we already did the school committee calendar. All right, um. Do we want to do public comment before budget is stuck in or after?
I'd do it after.
Yep.
Yeah.
Beautiful, so we're gonna go back now to.
Hand up.
Sir, sorry.
Sorry, I'm, I shouldn't speak on the topic, uh, prior topic, actually.
Yes.
Sure.
Yes, sorry, I'm, I'm still gonna mark papers.
Okay. This, uh, curious about the school board training, is that mandatory, that a school board must go through the training? And, uh, and then my follow up question would be, uh, how much does it cost for each of those? The Drummond Woodson, I'm sure most lawyers don't, I'm, I'm sure there's a cost of that, is Eileen King coming out of the booth of her part? Uh, and once again, is it?
Yes, it is in our, um, policy, so if you read our policy manual, we have navigation to do a school committee orientation each year on an annual basis. Um, and MSBA, we have a membership with MSMA, um, and so is part of our membership, there's not an additional fee for that. Um, Drummond Woodson does charge a fee to come up, which is why I'm not having them come every year. To figure we get the big guns one year, and then the softer guns one year.
But it's, you know. Yep.
Yep.
All right, so we're gonna head back to budget, everybody.
Enjoy.
And if Ken's gonna stand up, somebody let me know.
You should say a lot more people, so he kind of blends in over there.
Since I lost Kathy on the Zoom event folder now, so that we have the business. Hi, so we're about to start the budget process, and I'm gonna put you on speakerphone, okay? Alright, thanks. Alright. Anyone's proceed, Adam and Chair.
Um, why don't we start with you explaining the changes that you made from the previous budget?
Okay. So this afternoon, I emailed out, and it was three o'clock, so I imagine not everybody had an opportunity to look at the three documents I sent out. But you received a, um. Summary of revisions made, I found fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars in reductions, well. That's the net, there are some things that needed to increase, and some things that needed to decrease, and the net was fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty. And then I presented you with a line item by the budget, so that you can see each one of those changes in the line, and then I presented you with a revised. Um, revenue sheet.
Yep.
And. Uh, let's see, starting with the. Revised revenue sheet, I think. The reason I'm gonna start with the revenue sheet is because, um, this, this revenue sheet, it's a, um. Basically a mathematical thing, right? So if, if the numbers in the revenue in the top half year go down. Then the amount of additional local required goes up. Right? So what the expenses are has some impact on the amount of additional local, um, and total local. But really, the bigger impact is on the revenue side, and I mentioned that because. We know that our state subsidies are going down, we have anticipated them to decrease for, um. Fiscal year twenty-six, we anticipate them to decrease. Well, they, they have decreased. Well, they, they have decreased, it's not an anticipation. Fiscal year twenty-six is down four hundred and thirteen thousand. We anticipate five to six hundred thousand coming down in fiscal year twenty-seven. Which means that no matter what happens in the year after this one. We're going to need to find that five to six hundred thousand dollars from another source. So we were pretty lucky this year, we were able to balance a lot of our subsidy cut. With anticipated increases in tuition and special education tuition. Um, and honestly, that is on account of our lower numbers for special ed and for elementary ed. And please stop me if I'm going too fast. For special ed and elementary ed, it's truly a numbers game, so it's total numbers of. Butts and seats, you know, divided into total amount of budget and that gives you your rate. Because we've got less kids here, our special ed and elementary ed tuition went up. Now, our biggest customer for special ed tuition is RST twelve. And those kids have choice. So all of those kids who are choosing to come here are paying the higher rate. And thanks to that, our cut in subsidy for this year. Wasn't a punch in the gut. We were able to cover it with the increase in tuition. Now, our goal for the next year and all the years moving forward is to increase those counts. So that we get more tuition. Kathy explains to us, um, a lot of details about valuation. On Thursday night. And valuation is the number that the state comes up with. It's, this is the, the worth of your property. In this, in Wisconsin. And the amount of subsidy we receive is based on a couple of factors, but two key factors. Are the valuation of the municipality and the number of students. If our valuation gets high enough. The state is going to say, you are worth so much money, you do not have to. Hey, you do not have to get subsidy anymore. Your town can cover the cost of education. Um, so based on Kathy's analysis. That's probably going to happen to us by twenty twenty-eight. Which means when you look at this revenue sheet. For twenty-six, the state is giving us one point nine five million dollars. If in twenty twenty-eight, the state is not giving us one point nine five million. They would give us a small amount, maybe a few hundred thousand for special education. That would mean we are minimum receivers. That's what's happening in Booth Bay. They are minimum receivers. That difference, that one point nine million has to come from somewhere. And most likely, unless we get creative, which I intend to get creative. But the first place you would look is local taxation. So. The other thing I want to draw your attention to is in the revenue side where it says fund balance, that's six hundred thousand. That's six hundred thousand we're pulling out of our fund balance. To reduce the amount we have to ask for from the locals, the taxes. So when we run out of fund balance, we won't be able to reduce the amount anymore. So imagine we have a ten million, seven hundred thousand dollar budget with no subsidy. And no fund balance. The amount that we have to raise from the locals is not. Six million, nine hundred fifty-nine thousand, but it's six million, nine hundred fifty-nine thousand plus. One million, nine hundred fifty thousand plus six hundred thousand, right? So that's the cliff that I've talked about in the past. And, um, that, that we worry about and we want to prepare for. So. Based on our fund balance analysis, at the end of fiscal year twenty-six. We think we'll have almost a million dollars left. We don't know for sure. We have to wait till we get there, but the projection is close to one million. I think it was nine hundred and fifty, the nine hundred and eighty thousand, not looking at that paper right now. Which means that next year, we could pull another six hundred thousand to offset the taxes. And then that would reduce our fund balance and then maybe the year after that, we'd be about. We might have one year after that if we didn't do anything else with the fund balance. And if we didn't contribute any extra money to the fund balance. So I just wanted to be, I just want to explain it really carefully that. We can reduce, like, the, we found a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. From the budget adopted on April twenty-ninth. You guys tasked me with coming up with an amount close to that on Thursday, so I've provided that to you. That will be less, it's less than two percent of the expense side. How that breaks down the taxpayers is really based on what gets funded out of the local side. So the impact to taxpayers is, um, really dependent on the town. And what they do with the, um. Uh, when they assign the money to the taxes, taxes, the commitment, what they do with the commitment. So I just want us to really think about that fund balance and think about, um. Because, because I see, it has been suggested to me and I, and. As a selectman and also as a school member, I was big on this, take it from the fund balance and reduce the taxes. If we do that. Then we set ourselves up for a bigger hit to our taxpayers next year or the year after. I think next year we would be alright, but the year after is when we would probably face it. And my bigger concern than the fund balance is the rising valuation. And today, um, Dennis sent me a, uh, preliminary valuation report for this year for Wisconsin. And they have, if, they have, um. Put the number higher, about a hundred thousand dollars higher than what was in Kathy's analysis. So it's looking like in the future, we are going to become minimum receivers. And, um. That's why it would be a good idea for us to, um, plan. How to wean ourselves off of that and how to slowly increase the burden on local taxpayers. And, and then work really hard to find other revenue streams over the next. I would say three to five years, right? So going to ask you, I know you're a new school committee. And. What I'm going to ask though is that people can try and look like two, three and four years into the future. Now that's my job, that's what I spend a lot of my time doing. Um, but it's, I encourage you to think of that as we go through the process. So if you guys have questions on that before we go through the line items.
Well. I look at a budget. I look at a budget two ways, well, two points of view. First is your revenue stream, obviously. And the other is, is where do we find efficiencies in the budget in each part? Has to be a twofold thing. That's all. How do you do that? Well, we get so an old bicycle refrigerator out in the front yard, maybe.
You jump in the yard or I have my dog park the side of the town. Alright, so do you want to go through line by line?
Sir.
One of the things we want the subsidy and the, when will we get, because this is estimated. When will we get specific number of state subsidy?
For twenty twenty-six, that is the number.
That is the number, so it doesn't change. I've seen the audit of twenty-four, it does change sometimes. That there was the. Increase with state subsidy, so I was just curious, is that?
Kathy, do you recall, he's asking about the change in state subsidy that you saw in the other report for twenty twenty-four? I don't recall what that was about.
Um, I don't either, um. They do, they do hold, um. Oh, uh, yes, remember we found, we found an error and, uh.
Last year we found an error in our student count and then they adjusted it later. It was on our revenue sheet last year, that one.
They do take money into, they do reduce our subsidy throughout the year for main care seed. Um, so that could be what he's talking about, but I'm, I'm not.
Yeah, it's not a lot. Main care seed is when, um, so if. For our stu-, we don't do this in district, but for our students in out of district placements. Who are getting services reimbursed directly by main care. The state will come back and reduce our subsidy by the amount of that main care because. Yes, they'll take it away because, uh, yeah.
So I was just curious.
If you have a specific question, I could look at it and maybe it'll jog my memory.
Yeah, that's, that's a question. It's state subsidy, that's. That changed throughout the year, because I think you just said that it's. You're rejecting that the state subsidy is going to be that one point nine five.
For twenty-six.
Projection, okay, so.
It's published, it's on the ED two seventy-nine.
So it's not a projection, that's what we'll get.
That's what we're getting. Could, could they change it? Yes, but it's probably not likely.
But they do sometimes.
In twenty-four, the ED two seventy-nine came out based on ten less students than we actually had. We had a bad count. So we called them up panicky, can you please fix our count? And they said, maybe in the supplemental budget. And then I bravely put it on our revenue sheet and then it did come through in the supplemental budget. It was around a hundred and fifty grand. What are you looking at there?
Yeah, one thirty.
One thirty. I would have to look at that and to tell you exactly what that is.
And then we were also just talking about the fund balance and contribution each year. Is it correct in saying that the last three years we came from home funding, you know, the dollars from the fund balance to offset taxes?
Yeah. Yeah, and I want to talk a bit about fund balance and budget to actual. Um, since twenty twenty, we've received. Ah, millions, actually Kathy just sent me the total of, of federal dollars for COVID relief. And when we got, so there's two types of federal money. There's money that supplants your programming and there's money that supplements your program. Like SE, you can't supplant your programming, you can supplement your programming. That means you can't accept SE funds. Let me slow down. I get going too fast. You can't accept SE funds. And then cover something you were going to pay for anyway. So if the SE funds go away, then we don't do Title IX services anymore, right? The COVID money, um, Esser, E S S E R, that money was, you were able to do that. You were able to supplant your budget and it was use it or lose it. And so school districts all around, not just the state, but the country. Spent their federal COVID money first and, and then their local budget money second. And it wasn't, they didn't say in Esser one that there would be an Esser two and an Esser three. So you didn't know that there was more coming, which is why superintendents build budgets that didn't rely on the COVID money. But then the COVID money just kept coming. And that is why if you look at our budget to actuals for the past four years, bless you. You see that we budgeted way more than we actually spent. In local money. Because we were supplanting with federal money in many cases, not in every case. But that's how we ended up building a really massive fund balance. And that, and so we've been spending down the fund balance for the past couple of years by taking these chunks. Six hundred thousand, six hundred thousand. We're doing it again this year. Um, could we take enough to make a flat budget or to provide a budget cut? Yes. But then next year we won't have it and you'll have this huge artificial increase to the taxpayers. Does that make sense?
But in total this year, we're taking out fund balances.
This year, for taxes or for all purposes? Um, yeah, I think it's a little over a million. It was, um. Jim, yeah, three hundred and twenty-five thousand for capital improvements. Um, fifty thousand for fuel, diesel reserve. Eighty thousand for a health insurance reserve, um. Six hundred thousand with the taxes. Are you adding those up as I go? I'd say that's around a million-ish, yeah. And then, then that will still leave the number we're anticipating to put in around four hundred and so that will leave us with about nine hundred and eighty-ish. At the end of FY twenty-five.
Make that, especially reserve. Anybody, because if you say that we use some of that, especially in the server.
We haven't yet, but we're planning to use it this year. So. What? I got the, the Hawkeye from Jeff over there. Uh, no, we haven't yet, but we are planning to this year. We're planning and I, I don't necessarily feel comfortable about it. But because of our out of district placements. Um, when we did the budget in January, we had two elementary, right? And we had three high school and they were all graduating. So I cut out of district placements. We've since gotten two more and we've got one on that. So if we take the, we added twenty-five thousand to out of district placements in this version. Uh, actually the July third version and then we're planning. If to use the two hundred and twenty-five thousand in special ed reserve and then that'll be gone. Why would I do that? Why would I feel comfortable doing that? I have an idea. Of a way that maybe we can get our out of district placement kids back, not in our building, but in our town. Like a Shrep littles, but.
You, uh, you said that we had three graduate, how much did that weigh? That you cut out of the subject?
Well. They're not all equal. Two of them were in Shrep. So the Shrep kids were about forty-two thousand each, but one of them was in Saco. And at, um. Sweetser? Sweetser or Spurway, one or the other in Saco, but the big expense there was the transportation. We paid sixty-five thousand dollars a year to transport that student and roughly a hundred thousand for their tuition. So it's, it's expensive. Now the Shrep kids, if we had had to send them out of district, right? It would have been those big numbers, but instead they were around forty grand a piece plus our Shrep membership. So for the price of one Spurway kid, we got two Shrep kids and also kept them close to home. If we could open, this wouldn't be us, Shrep is a separate legal entity that I sit on the board for as a superintendent. If we could open up a Shrep littles. Like a, a program for little children in the town somewhere or somewhere closer than far away. It would save us, um, tens of thousands of dollars. And keep those kids closer to home. So, yeah, a lot of work ahead of us, big, big plans.
We know, if we know we're two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars short on our special education, why not budget that instead of pulling up from the fund balance?
Well, we've already put it there, right? We, we authorized, the taxpayer has authorized us to spend it two years ago. And, um. Our, we've been under, uh, people wanted us to lower the budget, so. And also to lower the.
We hit that cliff in two years. And we just spent the two twenty-five now instead of budgeting it. That's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars we could still have.
Like you can change this bucket right now. I'd be happy to put it back in.
No, I'm just curious with the decision behind it. That means in reality, we're pulling eight hundred and twenty-five thousand out of the fund balance to offset taxes. I know the revenue says six hundred because eight hundred twice, so separate.
Yeah, I guess six of one half does another, people go that way. It's not being raised, it's money that's sitting there, so it's money that we will no longer earn interest on. But it's money that the taxpayers put up for education in the past and now we're gonna.
Yeah, that was just a thought popped up, just if we're worried about the fund balance disappearing over the next couple of years and we don't need it, well, we're going to need that when. We hit this financial cliff potentially, the more we pull from it now, the less we're going to have in two years, three years. When we might need it, but. Reset.
If that's only for special ed, right? So we can only ever use that for a special ed and. One might argue that you need it now. I was under the impression that we wanted to reduce this budget. So that's what I thought, we'd be doing that way. But it's, if you guys don't want to, we can put that in the local budget again. You would make my special ed director very happy. Alright, so now if you would like, we can go through the, um. The changes or how do you want to proceed from here? Or do you have more questions?
No, that was on that one.
Alright, so if you wanna go through.
The cover sheet changes.
Yeah, alright. Alright, so you'll see in guidance, um it's actually lucky that we went through this process because I discovered just today. That we had only budgeted for half of our S R O. So that's what this, we've added fifteen thousand to other contracted services under guidance. If you look in your budget, um. You've got guidance, contracted services, uh the dash oh nine oh, and that was fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty. And right underneath it, the dash three hundred, that's the high schools. That was only four thousand three hundred fifty-two. That needed to add fifteen thousand in it for the S R O. Because we contribute thirty thousand to the S R, yeah, thirty grand for the S R O. So guidance went up slightly.
Is that typically where it's been budgeted in the past?
Yes. And then if you jump down to, wait, I left health and curriculum. If you jump down to, um I left staff development. Library services, I reduced training and conferences um. By two hundred and fifty-five dollars for each of the elementary and the middle high school. If you jump down to technology. Um, we eliminated that training and conferences money and just left enough money um for the. Acton conference in the fall. Uh, if you go down to election services, I added, this is under your school board things. I added three thousand five hundred dollars to the budget. Um, that is because. That's the cost uh that the town manager told me this this process will be for the town and that they will bill us for that. Yeah. Looking down to tuition reimbursement administrators. That is at the elementary school and um I did reach out to all of the administrators to ask for cuts. And Stacy and Danielle both said to cut their uh tuition. So that they're not gonna take any classes. Um Stacy's taking one. A special ed law class and then so I left in there enough money to cover that class and then for the assistant in the office to take our classes. And jumping down, so the biggest cuts you'll see were under operations, custodial and maintenance. Johnny and I spent a good deal of time um working together on this and. He had intended to be here tonight, but it's actually John Mary's birthday. And he had some family show up from out of town, so he asked if he could leave. I said, of course. Um, alright, so we. And this is another place where we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna use our reserve money, so. But for water and sewer, um John suggested that we cut um six thousand dollars. From the elementary school and two thousand from the middle high school. And electricity, for July third, I had cut both middle high and elementary twenty thousand each. And John asked me to adjust those cuts. So I added eight thousand back to the elementary school and I added ten thousand back to the middle high school. He said the electric companies are not blocking in their rates. And um he didn't feel comfortable taking bigger cuts there. Now, energy oil, that is where we decided um. To cut some money from the budget and then also to pull money from reserves. So he felt comfortable. If we were to use thirty-five thousand of fuel reserve funds. So he didn't wanna cut anything from the high school, so I just applied seventeen thousand five hundred to the high school. And then he was okay with cutting ten thousand from the elementary school and I applied seventeen thousand five hundred there. Then moving down to custodial, we did cut one thousand six hundred and thirty-five from the elementary. And four thousand seven hundred and seventy-five from the middle high. And then flipping over to maintenance, um. There was money applied to a budget for a central office. And we looked into that line and that was just high school substitutes. So uh for custodial, so we eliminated that amount of money. And we're comfortable with the other budgeted lines. And I reduced four thousand dollars in maintenance supplies. Well, alright, then. Under three to eight instruction. Under other contracted services. Oh, wait, there's one other note. Uh, this thing called mileage reimbursement contracted drivers under maintenance. I cut ten thousand. Now, here's the story with that line. And this is where you may wanna make a change, but I I wanted to come in over a hundred and fifty thousand like you asked. Originally. Um, John had asked for thirty thousand dollars in this line. To buy a new minivan. And by new, I mean a twenty twenty-two or so Chrysler Pacifica. They have some at um was Casseford. This is all from John. And in, we had bought one last year in that line for twenty-five thousand dollars. So we replaced a twenty-twelve van with a twenty-twenty-two van last year. Then in January, when I did this budget, I saw reimbursement contracted drivers. And I cut ten thousand because I didn't remember that that was the van. Um, nor did I realize Johnny wanted another van. So then I, yesterday or last night. Sometime I was, I've been working closely with Kathy for the past few days and I said, what is in this line? Because we did spend. Uh, money in fiscal year twenty-five. So what was that? And so. Um, that was the van. And I was like, oh, and I said, hey, John, do you want another van? And he said, I do want another van. We have another van that has a hundred and sixty-seven thousand miles. And it's leaking air conditioning fluid and it has some body work that needs to be done. And so we we kicked around the van a lot today and I was going to put the van back in the budget. Um, thinking like, alright, let's just put in the van. But then, when I realized I had to put the S R O back in the budget. I decided, okay, we have another solution. We can reduce this by ten grand, leave five thousand in that line to fix the old van. And then put the old van on local rotation. And we have a minibus that can run our Augusta Chelsea students. We can put more kids in the bus and we have a driver for that minibus. So we could get away for another year without buying the van. If you wanted to um. If you wanted to put, so this budget is based on um. This line has five thousand dollars in it. If you wanted to add twenty-five thousand dollars anywhere. Um, that would be John Mary's pick, I bet. We both agree that we can get through the year without the van. We'll probably need the van next year. However, if we get Shrep littles, we won't need the van, so. I know it, uh I sat on the select board with Bobby Blackden for a couple of years and he would say fix the van. So putting on my Bob Blackden hat, I say fix the van, but that's your call. Uh, okay, sliding down. This other contracted services. Five thousand dollars. I'm gonna have to look, three to eight instruction. I cut five thousand dollars out of other contracted services. I can't remember what that is right now. Let me look that up. Or Kathy, do you remember the five thousand dollar cut in other contracted services for three to eight instruction?
Well, that, um, that would would be where C um C S consulting was and their more area was. So perhaps you were gonna reduce that a little bit.
Okay, I'm gonna look at that when we get done going over this and you guys are discussing, I'm gonna look at that one again. And then. Moving down, we cut. Um, under self-contained, we eliminated um tuition reimbursement for a teacher. And we eliminated um some money for conferences. And that, if you flip all the way to the bottom line, what that gives you. Is a grand total of ten million seven hundred forty-four thousand one hundred thirty nineteen dollars. Which is a hundred and fifty-two thousand, a hundred and fifty-one dollars less than the April twenty-nine budget adopted. And you go back to your revenue sheet. At the very bottom, I included the April twenty-ninth. Right? So April twenty-ninth, we had increased, the increase we were bringing to our taxpayers was three hundred and nine thousand. This changes the increase to taxpayers uh to just a hundred and fifty-two thousand or two point two four percent. And this represents an overall increase in expenses from last year's budget to one point six two percent. Now, before I go any further, there's one last paper. It's the the colorful one. This is the, this is where we take all of the. Um, budget categories and sort of put them into the warrant article pockets or warrant article buckets. And so if you notice on this report, under fiscal year twenty-five, there's nothing in that column. Because uh my understanding from the last meeting is that instead of putting fiscal year twenty-five budget numbers. We're gonna put in fiscal year twenty-five actual numbers. So that when we present the budget to the community, we can show them. The fiscal year twenty-six budget compared to the fiscal year twenty-five actuals. Now, that's something we would not normally be able to do because normally. We wouldn't have the fiscal year twenty-five actuals. It would have happened in April and been finalized in June. So I think that that's a smart thing that we're able to do. The numbers aren't in there now for two reasons. One, I finished this up at about five fifteen today. And two, and all the actuals aren't in there yet. So as uh Shelley was walking out the door. Someone brought another pile of bills that were sitting in the high school that need to get paid. We also have May and June out of district placement bills. That we haven't even received yet, so we're gonna try and track them down so that in, within the next two weeks. This uh actual column will be as accurate as possible. That's all I got.
Those operations, custodial, maintenance, it all falls under job. Those are three separate cost centers, so that money doesn't move around. Like if operations, we're estimating what we're given.
Yeah, it's all in the facilities maintenance um cost center, which is Article ten.
So, so we can move move money around between operations, custodial, maintenance.
Correct.
As we need it, cuz.
Yes.
Right now, we're. Thirty thousand dollars over what we've spent for custodial. Just about that on electricity. So I'm saying if we decide we need the new van, we got almost sixty grand setting up that we haven't spent in the last two years in that budget line. Like we're budgeting twenty-two thousand dollars for substitutes for the custodian and we've spent three thousand dollars each of the last two years. So it's twenty-two thousand dollars right there. Well, nineteen if you take away the three thousand that we normally spend.
Are you talking about electricity?
No, I'm looking at the custodial substitutes.
Substitutes.
The last two years for the high school, we spent three thousand dollars each year, or we budgeted twenty-two thousand dollars. The elementary school, we spent seven thousand last year and then thirty-five thousand the year before, so I'm assuming we hired some people for twenty-five.
Um, Kathy, can you pull up a budget to actual for custodial that I? He's saying three and the report shows three thousand two hundred and fifty-nine spent for twenty twenty-five, but. We had basically a custodial substitute staff all year and. There there was more than one staff member. I feel like that can't be quite accurate.
I got the budget to actual right here, July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Says we have sixty-five percent left over in one budget for the elementary school and then we had eighty-eight percent left over for the high school. I believe, I believe the, probably it's been a few months. John said it's cuz we don't typically use a lot of substitutes.
Well. It was budgeted under the district where I I eliminated that five thousand, let's go for the other ones.
My only point to that was just, there's money for the van in there. We decide to buy the new van. By.
Well, the van is budgeted under special education.
It's not under, that's why he asked for under maintenance.
It's under transportation, but it's under special ed, special transportation.
Don't forget the transportation article.
It's the transportation article, but it's actually, if you go through the line item, you'll find it underneath um. I think it's underneath special ed. Let me make sure I'm not telling you lies here.
So this mileage reimbursement contract that of five thousand dollars is not for the new van?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The mileage reimbursement contract, you said you cut it to five thousand.
Be that, that's where the van was booked. So you see on page thirteen of this.
Yeah, it is under.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't really repair it.
But if you look at the third set of numbers, the twenty-seven fifty, that's specialized transportation.
So that, back to like, I guess the question, so that's operations, cust- custodial, maintenance all fall under. His cost center where you can move money around, but is that also applied to special ed transportation falls in that as well? Where we can pull that money and use it for a van if we chose to?
Kathy, did you hear that? I guess the question is if um special ed transportation is in the transportation cost center or it's specialized transportation in the. I think, I think it's in the transportation cost center, isn't it?
It is, it is in the transportation cost center.
Yeah. That was five percent. It's number sense?
Well.
You you're probably right.
Believe five percent is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so. Still a lot from the cost, yeah.
Think this other contracted services we wanted to ask you about last night.
Was that Chomsky, the five thousand dollar type?
Oh, yeah. Yep, the five thousand dollars that I spent there, I took two thousand five hundred out of the seventh grade trip to Chomsky. And I took two thousand five hundred out of the eighth grade trip to Boston. Because we have less students in seventh grade this year and the Boston trip used to always be a fundraiser. I know, I sold a lot of hot dogs to send Michael to Boston and then. Lene didn't get to go till she was a senior because of COVID, but they still had that money. Lot of cheese, no free sandwiches. Okay, thanks Kathy. That's what that was, um Chomsky and eighth grade trip. And so I did talk to each one of my um s- s- school committee members or not. School maybe my admin team members and asked them what they could cut. And so. We went over all of the things that John came up with. Um, and his comments were basically um. This is, he said, this is all I dare to do at this point, not knowing what the new electric rates are going to be. So that that was his comment.
Um. It wasn't specifically talking about school rates, but like I assume.
Yeah. Um, Chelsea said, I know it isn't much, but you could cut two thousand from conferences and technology.
Thanks, Chelsea.
Um. She said, there aren't really any other areas I see that could be reduced since I never know if equipment may need to be repaired or replaced.
Her original department head presentation, there's eight thousand dollars in maintenance uh technology supplies.
Yeah, four thousand.
And she said she didn't think she was gonna need that cuz she's pretty well set from last year, so.
That's changed. Um, a lot of it too is um at the end of the year, things come back damaged and missing. That's changed. Um, a lot of it too is um, at the end of the year, things come back damaged and missing. Chargers are. Crazy. Andrea Level, um, I had asked her about the five thousand dollars for tutors. And she said, is my strong recommendation that the sub tutoring line stays the same. If a child with an IEP gets suspended beyond ten days, we need to provide an education and services. Five thousand is a low amount in my opinion. Um. Because we are required to provide specific services regardless of what employment challenges we face, having money available for subs is crucial. When N-Tex route, we require someone to sub, there are no other cuts I think we can make, and I continue to be concerned about out of district. Yeah, let's see. Stacy, both Stacy and Sarah said, you don't have to reimburse me for my cellphone anymore. It's four hundred and eighty dollars a year. I didn't make that cut because um, it's in their contracts. Did my contract, it's in a lot of people's contracts. So if that's a direction that we wanna go, I think we need to um. Create an MOU, like have everybody sign an addendum. Um, but four hundred and eighty times that many people is, is not gonna have a big impact. And um. The teacher with the GoFundMe page.
Mm-hmm.
So I found out about the teacher with the GoFundMe page and um, that's a person who had put in there, they've taken it down. Uh, because they felt like they received enough money to get what they wanted. What they wanted were room dividers for a, a. Classroom in order to separate children, especially like classroom, um, separate them visually. So not walls, but temporary dividers. And they had them in their original January wish list and I. So I cut it back in January just to, because I was trying to reduce and bring you a budget that was less than three percent. Or roughly three percent, because I also live here and I'm sensitive to that.
So has that GoFundMe been turned over to the school district?
She'll just buy the dividers. She offered to give us the money and we could buy the dividers, but I said.
I'd rather, if it was a fundraising on behalf of the school, I'd rather every penny go to the school. We don't know how much was raised. We don't, versus how much. We don't know how much is raised versus how much is being spent on dividers. Do you know, do we have a dollar number of what was raised versus what?
I think she mentioned about seven hundred dollars. Um, so before we go there, I checked, we don't have a policy on that. We may wanna look into it, but many teachers do um, go fund, not go fund me, it's usually their donors choose. And um, also teachers apply for small grants on their own. Um, when I was a teacher, I won the contest and the check was written out to me personally and I bought. Um, a podcast microphone for my classroom, three hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, so that's, that's a thing that happens. I would um.
Well, that would be a policy issue.
I would urge you, if you wanna learn more about that or take it into consideration, we should probably ask the policy.
Paul, you shouldn't yell.
I just wanted to, just uh, have everybody abstain from the conflict of interest. Like I decided to go out and fundraise for the school board and I raised ten thousand dollars. You guys don't know that. I come in with a five thousand dollar check. I look good. But then I pocketed five thousand. Not saying I would do that. I never would do that. But just so nobody can ever be accused of anything of. Where'd that money go? Did you really spend it on your classroom or did you not? And on the flip side, if they really need it for their classroom, I'd rather they know the school board has their back financially. The district will buy that, like. We should buy it for them. Uh, we got five hundred thousand dollars left in the fund balance, so if they needed that, we can go out and. Get it. I don't want them to feel like they have to go outside and buy stuff on their own. But.
Many teachers do.
Yeah.
I, I know they do. I just, I don't feel like, they shouldn't have to. They.
Oh, yeah.
If they, they really need stuff for their classroom, I feel like it's. It's possible, but we have, like I said, four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars left over a year. We should spend a little more on those supplies. Just so they don't, they don't have to spend their own money. But I know every school does, every teacher does.
They do. My husband used to, every time we went to the grocery store, it was really, so.
You still clunk.
And I should do that.
Your Halloween costumes and everything else you're spending your money on. Well, well, with that.
Yeah, he didn't get away from it when I stopped.
Alright, so. But yeah, um, any questions specific, gentlemen? Finance guys.
Well, I'm looking through the cost centers. And we found savings and maintenance, we found savings in, in many areas. But I'm not seeing much change in administrative costs. Is there anything we could do later? I mean, I grant him most of his salaries, I understand that.
Yeah. We could cut, I mean, we cut some tuition. Um, we sit, what'd you say, Kathy?
I didn't.
Oh, um. We could cut people.
Well, we'd like to try to stay away from that.
Yeah.
Right.
Where, where are the inefficiencies in each department? I guess what I'm asking, that's what we need to look for.
Yeah.
And you know, you know, everybody works hard and, and they, you know. But I'm just thinking there's, you know, you have supplies, you have contracts to copy it, you know. All that goes through, but we're kind of disjointed. And you know, everything shows up in its own school, its own department, its own, so it's hard to keep track of.
Phones, we did an analysis of the phones in the system and actually. I cut phones last year. We're overspending that budget by about twelve hundred dollars. By each of those six thousand dollar phone lines are probably gonna be under um. No overspend again, so we can't cut phones. If anything, we could add money to phones. I'm comfortable. Letting it go like this, but um. Well, copiers, uh, we could crack down on um, color copies. I, I look at this table, like all of these copies cost a lot of money. If you guys would all take a laptop that we could do everything digitally, I wouldn't have to make any copies and that would save. Hours of Cindy's time preparing for these meetings.
Yeah.
But the place we could be efficient, um. We could pull a copy machine out of each building and make, and have the staff. Travel further, you know, and make copying like less.
I'm just saying, you know, it's, copiers are, they're expensive to have and to run.
We, yeah.
I mean, what's it cost you a year to lease a copy?
The copier?
Yeah.
Well, that's one of the categories that are, is way underspent.
Yeah.
The past two years.
Yeah, so as long as, you know, don't get rid of something, just if it's perennially being underused. Move that money out of the budget. You know, maybe half of what you're not using.
Yeah.
You know, that might cover up the two hundred dollars and maybe ten thousand. There's no, no way in art. And you get some of that into your telephone budget to make sure you have the money for that.
I think it would be really um. I think it could be a good idea.
Yeah, let's just sum it up.
That, to think about that, um, maybe the five-year plan of shifting away from where. Where we are now, we're in a world where we take six hundred thousand from fund balance and put four hundred thousand back. We take six hundred thousand from fund balance and put four hundred thousand back. Now, if we don't take any money from fund balance in one year.
Well, you wanna.
I think we need to do it gradually.
Yeah.
And uh, and we are on our way. Like if you look at the fund balance numbers. Since I got here, we are bringing them down. You're bringing them down.
I know, but I'm just saying that.
Finding those efficiencies.
Yes.
Well, yes, the problem is we just don't have that much inefficiency, like at the moment, because we, I mean, we've never been a rich enough school district to be able to just like. Forget about where the money is or, you know, just kind of constantly be budgeting like way over. We just, you know. I'm, I'm. We don't have that many inefficiencies. Because I know that.
If you look at the budget to actual, though, we have multiple categories that are seventy-five to a hundred percent fund spent.
Yeah, yeah.
Those inefficiencies that I'm.
Year after, yes.
Kathy, did you want to talk at all to budget to actuals?
Um, well, just that, we still have a lot of bills that have to be paid for. This year twenty-five, so the actual is not as of the end of the year. We're on an accrual basis, so that means anything that we pay in July that's. Can do in June, um, has to be booked back to June. Uh, we have cut a hundred and eighty thousand from non-salary and budget accounts with this budget. So there have been significant cuts in areas where um, things have been underspent in the past.
So I guess the question I would ask is, are we just getting to half of them or? Uh, the inefficiencies, are we doing just, we just finding half of what's available out there or is there more?
No, I think if you ask me to find more money, I'm probably gonna look at staff.
Why not tuition and?
Well, tuition is bargaining play, you know.
But, but, but if every year.
Gradually.
I know, but that's just one thing, but for every year, we're never spending it. We have fifty thousand in contingency funds. We had, we, we can move up to ten percent around or minimum five percent around. We have five hundred thousand dollars left over every year the past three years. There's money to pay for tuition if somebody after the last second decides to take a class and we didn't know about it. Um, that's just, that was just, just one example. I didn't have time. Once again, this proposal we got today, today is completely different than the last ten proposals we had. So trying to compare numbers. Is a process to stick.
My third proposal minus another fifty-nine thousand dollars.
I know, I'm saying this format is completely different than this format that we got a week ago. So it's, it's much.
Explain why. It's not because I'm trying to trick anybody. It's because. There wasn't time to put the changes into profile. So that format with all the details and notes, that's the profile format. Shelley was on vacation. She returned today. There was not time to put them there, so we exported that format into. Uh, Excel and then made the changes in Excel. And then when you guys approve it, we'll go back and update profile. It's not to deceive or fool. There's no trickery here.
No, I'm not. That's not what I'm trying to say. I'm saying it's, it's hard when every week or even every month, we're getting a different complete format. So now it's. This one last week was eighty-eight pages. Took me a week to go through that. This one's thirty pages. Um, just, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to do your due diligence when it's always trying to prepare different formats, but um. So things like. Different lines, parts and supplies, we're five thousand dollars over on that or leftover. There's. You're saying cut personnel and we don't wanna cut personnel, but there's a couple hundred thousand dollars. That could easily be cut off, but don't even touch personnel. If we just look at supplies. Custodials, substitutes that you only pay.
Well, it brought.
Thousand a year.
Supplies requests with me. So if you want to know. The thirty-three thousand dollars in um, secondary ed supplies was originally forty-three thousand. And I just cut ten grand.
Yep.
Back in January. Um, I got their actual lists. I went in today to see what can I cut from here. Um, and what I found in here are things like. Um, the microscope for care guy, goggles for science class, lumber for tech ed. Uh, there was, there was nothing good, crazy, so um. Yeah, you're, you're welcome to go through these. They are school supplies and, and I think. I mean, it's not my place to defend or argue the budget, but I feel like what you have here. Is uh, you guys have done due diligence and you have looked really closely at every line. And we have reduced the budget that was put to taxpayers on the April twenty-ninth. By over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've cut the increase to the local taxation in half. And it is below the rate of inflation. And it is twenty-five percent below what some of our neighboring towns are going through right now in their budgets. So I think it's a, a fair budget that meets the needs of taxpayers and students. And also will help us as we transition off of subsidy and fund balance in our three to five-year.
Right. I just think we, we would need less subsidy and less fund balance if we tighten up the budget.
And we're doing it a year, we're doing it each year. We can go back if you want and uh. I can eliminate supplies and tuition.
Cause I don't wanna go through it, anything about personnel. I don't wanna go, anything that's gonna affect anybody's jobs.
We cut.
To without any means.
And tuition, um, do you, I mean.
One, again, like you go back to that custodial one just because it's on the cover sheet. When we're budgeting forty thousand dollars for subs and we only spend ten thousand a year. That's thirty thousand over.
Alright, well that's.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just one person's opinion, one person's, I said, we got this today because you guys. Do what you could in the time we had to deal, present something for tonight.
We have to give it to the school committee or the select board on Thursday. But we have uh, we're pushed, we're pressed. I think you guys have done great work in all of these meetings and availabilities. Awesome. Thank you so much.
No, thank you. You've worked very hard.
If you're comfortable with these numbers, I do have warrant articles you can sign tonight. If you're not looking through this again, I leave it to you guys.
I ask a lot of questions. I wanna hear about thoughts are on, I'm one person's opinion. I don't think I have anything. That weighs any more than about anybody else's, so.
Any other discussion or any other questions, concerns, thoughts?
Currently savings were at what, one fifty?
A hundred and fifty-two thousand from what we brought to the taxpayers the last time. And it, and if you, so that's off the total expense, but the more interesting number is. The revised adjusted total local, because that revenue, studying the revenue is half of your diligence. Like you've gotta study the revenue and.
But the only way we're lowering that number is by pulling fund balance.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The adjusted total local is two point three one now, which way, or I mean, uh.
It was four point five.
It was four point four, point five four, but. I'd argue the way we got closer to that number is not by budget cuts, it's by pulling out over one point two million from the. Fund balance to offset it.
No.
So we're cutting more numbers out of here.
Completed the fund balance, the four point four.
Right, but we're at two, three, one, because now we're pulling way more out of the fund balance than we initially were. So we're still right, we're still spending the money that was in the budget. We're just instead of taking it out of the budget, we're taking it out of the fund balance. So like lowers what the, yes, it lowers what the taxpayers have to pay right now.
I'm gonna quote my friend Bob Blackden again, because we had this discussion all the time when I was on the select board about the town's reserves. And he would say, it's all taxpayer money.
It is.
Agreed. I'm just again, we're trying to focus on a two to five-year window of the fiscal cliff and. Being hurting for money. So like, like the more we can keep in the reserve, better off we'd be in five years if we all of a sudden we lose one point nine million dollars. We're pulling out over a million dollars this year already. That would, that would help offset that subsidy loss next year or the year after. So I'm just trying to, like you said, balance them. One hand, the other, do we pull the fund balance now to offset taxpayers? Will they pay now or do we pull it out in two years and they pay more now? So. Like I said, they're gonna pay more now for our budget or they're gonna, we'll pay more later.
Like if we know where we're going, I think that it gradually.
Yeah, we're, we've gone from pulling six hundred thousand a year to offset taxes to now we're over, or this year we're pulling out over a millions. We're going in the wrong direction this year for. Pulling up fund balance.
No, we're not, we're not. We're planning to use the two hundred and twenty-five thousand special ed.
Yeah.
Um, and we're planning to take thirty-five thousand from the fuel reserve. We're not planning to use any of the other reserve funds for local, but for anything that's in this budget.
Right, but ju- but just that, that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on top of. So like I said, it's, yes, the other, the other ones were already designated. So it's eight hundred and twenty-five thousand is what we're pulling out of the fund balance. Whether it's designated or undesigned.
If you feel okay about it, because some people kind of wanna lower the fund balance. Like people don't like to see that big fund balance.
And at some point, we're legally going to have to lower it, right? Because I know there have been um. I think, I can't remember, stairs, there were rules about how much to be bolted.
Oh, it seems the state.
Like situation where at some point, it's like, it's gonna have to be lowered.
It's at nine percent now.
Yeah, they tried to lower it.
Nine percent with this budget. Um, we actually have a policy from two thousand sixteen about fund balance that states. The goal of that, with Cass, it's small committee is to have a fund balance around three percent. At the, I'd say the policy committee, they wanna look at that policy um, and consider if that's a good goal. Or if they wanna have that goal to be more in line with the state. But we're now, we're in between um, the five and the nine percent. So we, it was gonna be five percent. They kept it at nine and our fund balance, if it's around nine hundred and eighty thousand is around seven. I guess I'm going to ask now. Do we, are we ready or do we need one more night? Do you, are you comfortable with where this stands now?
Well, I mean. It's a one and a half percent deduction in what was presented. I mean, that's at least added in the right direction. And you know, we can't. And you know, we can't snub up the boat too fast. You're gonna have problems. We need to know that there's enough in the budget for you to be able to. Run the school. You know, and then we'll spend the next year maybe finding efficiencies. And reworking how we do do business.
Alright, so you are comfortable with this budget as it stands right now?
I am. I I was looking for a little bit more, but I I'm comfortable with the explanations that I was given.
Jonathan, are you comfortable with where this budget stands right now?
Well, guess what do you mean by looking for a little bit more?
Well, I was, I honestly thought we could get around two hundred thousand dollars out of this budget without causing, you know.
Too much hate.
Yeah, yeah, without crippling the operation. So to speak.
Like I said, we got the thirty thousand sitting right there in custodial that hasn't been spent in two years.
Yeah, I, yeah.
But. If we leave that, they can get the new van. We're gonna put five thousand, try to fix the old van, but that.
Well, my.
Starts to blow up.
I I my work truck and I go anywhere with it anytime. It's got two hundred and eighty thousand miles on it. You do the maintenance, these vehicles run a very long time. And five thousand will get you through a year. You buy a new van, you'll still spend three or four thousand dollars on it, plus the cost to buy a new van. It's a used van.
We're gonna put five thousand into it. John says we put five thousand into it. We can get by another year with that van.
Yeah.
Then we don't, we don't need a thirty thousand dollar buffer.
Shouldn't.
Under substitutes.
So the substitute cuts came directly from John. But if you want me to go back to John and ask him if we could go lower.
I'm just curious. Like I said, at the high school, we've only spent three thousand dollars each year, but we're budgeting twenty two thousand. So it's, are we expecting way more subs this year? For custodial work?
That right there gets us to two hundred thousand.
Well, just like, yeah, custodial is thirty.
Yeah, it's thirty. Two percent.
We're at what? One fifty two right now, so you'd be.
Yeah.
Forty eight, but I mean, I get you closer here. If that's what we're looking for is two hundred thousand, we get you closer to that. So Bill's thoughts.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Well, yeah, I just want.
Victoria, comfortable with this budget as it stands right now?
Okay.
Christopher, comfortable with the budget? This budget as it stands right now?
Uh, yeah, I I think that um, we we spent a lot of time focusing on the actual budgets where we, where there was. Uh, money not spent. Uh, but I haven't gone through the columns to see how many times an actual was.
High.
Right, and I'm wondering, yeah. Uh, if we took it from that angle, where we end up, so I I think, yeah, I would do a comment.
I'd say it does happen. I'd say probably three to one. Cause there is kind of like homeless was like jumped out at me. We spent like twenty thousand dollars to say this year, but we only budget four thousand dollars.
Right.
So we're gonna need sixteen thousand dollars more in that budget than we're, than we, than we think we need. We're just trying to make cuts. So there is, there's, there's lines. So if we were at the cat, the cost center, like this one was only spent eighty percent, this was spent fifty percent, but this one at the bottom line, I'll tell you. Okay, we raised a million for education. We came in under that. Even though some lines weren't spent, some lines were overspent. So at the bottom line, some of them. Most times it balances out.
One thing I can mention about education is that there were teachers um, that were budgeting for a full year and and left before the year I did. And so then they were either not replaced or they were replaced with a substitute at a much lower rate. So your educate, your general headlines, you'll you'll see it in um. You should see it in the um. Well, that. The uh, self-contained in elementary. Uh. You you would see it in. Um, three to eight with lead, like there are places where you'll see that. And then there are substitute lines that are over budget. Um, there are supply lines. That I cut way back, like office supplies was was that last year and they're, they went way over like by October. So. If this finance committee wants to really spend time and work on it every month with me, then I'm sure we can take in these things up. For um, so that next year they're.
And then broaden the others, where we need more money in certain areas, we can use less here.
Yeah.
Then we can actually lay it out next year where, okay, instead of being way over here and way under here, we balance more evenly. So on paper, it actually looks like we're spending what we need, where we need.
I think that would be great.
That would.
So. Because I do cost centers and I'm looking at, I asked for the three year recaps, twenty three, twenty four, twenty two through twenty four, and I set twenty two aside. That was COVID money. It was kind of a nominal.
Well, so was twenty three and twenty four, though. Our last COVID money went in twenty four.
What I'm getting at. The budget. Has per- perennially been, if I look at the cost centers, not line by line, because it drives you crazy. You know. But cost centers have habitually been overfunded. That's what I'm looking at, you know. Um, maintenance, you know, it's important that you maintain your building. But you you don't keep. Seven hundred thousand more than you need to slide into the fund balance and then you go take care of. You know, things, you know, in the future, you 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 basically. You know, you need to do the gym floor. You put in a year's budget and let the voters prove it.
When do we pull from that three hundred and twenty five capital reserve fund that we just established? Is that? We could, we 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 voted to establish a capital reserve. Fund balance of three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. But we're, we're not touching that this year.
Yeah, they are. That's.
Yeah, they're doing the gym. That's gym floor.
Three hundred and twenty five thousand?
And the.
Spending all that?
Oh, yeah. Bleachers are expensive.
Money.
It's gonna be beautiful.
Little gym.
I was, I was curious. I know we're actually, I know we voted to establish this, put this money in. I know if we're actually then spending all that money on something this year.
Yeah, no, in in fact, um, this year we made it just capital reserves without saying specifically what it was for. Uh, because I asked the attorney, Greg, are we allowed to do that? Um, just in case things changed. And to give us more flexibility, but if you go back and look at last year, it'll say specifically for paving and the year before that was specifically for the elevator project. They um, they pulled a million dollars for the elevator project three years ago. Because there was, I'm looking for, there was so much federal money pouring in and the last of the federal money was spent in twenty twenty four. And then we sent to the tune of millions. Kathy just sent me his spreadsheet. I'm gonna find it. So I can tell you. Two, two point eight million.
But it's, it's hard to do a.
Thank you.
What I call a true budget. When you have all this free money floating around. Because things have a tendency to get overfunded.
Yeah.
Because you have all this money.
Yeah, Karen?
Yes.
We did spend COVID money in twenty twenty five. It ended September thirtieth.
Okay.
It's just, there was considerable spending that happened last summer.
So this upcoming year is gonna be our true year. Twenty six can be our true fiscal year of.
Yeah, we don't have all.
Don't have COVID money. We have what we have.
No COVID money and there's potentially gonna be less. Hesse money.
Yeah, well, that being said, then probably I I could support this budget.
Yeah.
Now there could be another pandemic. I'm just kidding. Sorry. So things have been pretty wild lately.
Jonathan, are you comfortable?
I'm, I'm comfortable with the hundred and fifty two. We've cut out of it, cause it gives us something percent back to the town to say, hey, we listen, we made some cuts um, with the general understanding that we're, we're good. Going to the next budget season where we start going, okay, if we're way overspending, way underspending, let's actually lay this on paper. So it's clear for everybody in the public of they had forty thousand dollars left there. Why do you need more money? You show them what we pulled eighty over here because we can swap ten percent or five percent, whatever it is. So paper shows exactly what we're spending, where we need it. I think having one true year of no COVID money. And just what we have here, well, next year we can look at budget to actuals and categories and costs and all that. Dig into it with a fine tooth comb, other than dragging this out for another. Six hours, six days, six months. Nobody wants to do that, so. Uh, so yeah, I'm I'm good with. The hundred, the one fifty two we have. Report right now to get us, get us started this year.
Do I have a motion to approve this budget?
I made a motion to approve this budget in part number two.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Leave it, do it.
Right, that was three seconds.
Yeah.
Do we have any other discussion on this budget? All in favor of passing this budget? Thank you.
The warrant items, she said, she have.
Yeah.
We have to do that separately or is that just signed separately?
No, no, you can sign them right now.
We don't, we don't have a motion or vote or anything on that.
No, no, we can even sign.
I don't have to read them.
Thank you, Kathy. I'll talk.
Can you see?
Pardon?
Public comment.
Public comment.
On the budget process, so I guess.
On, uh, well, yes, I was getting ready to do public. I wasn't ready to adjourn yet. So. Public comment is our next thing up. Sir?
Go real quick and I'll move to the subject most likely, so I will. Keep it short. Um, I appreciate the board for diving back into this. And unfortunately, it took. Till now to get some same questions that we had back in January, February, March answered now. Um, but the way I look at it is. We had to spend thirty five hundred dollars in this process again. But on the other hand, we save a hundred and fifty thousand. So. My eyes, that's a blink.
Yeah.
I also spend the thirty five hundred dollars every time. Um. I only had a couple things and then was. I was, I said it earlier, but I was curious. If the board knows, we had a who serves as the servant.
What? Who's servant?
Service servant, no?
No.
We don't have.
Not.
Um, in the, the school uh, platform, does the school have any checking?
Yes.
How much is?
Multiple. We've got all kinds of accounts.
How much is it? Is any, it's not, that doesn't include the fund balance, but the school has separate checking accounts, is what you're saying?
Yeah, the, oh. Cindy, I've, we've got multiple accounted, multiple mains.
Elementary school, the elementary school, but just for. We, you know, dealing things and any the. Uh, activity account at the high school for the year, uh, in the activity account. This uh, house, I was at the cabinet, there's probably like sports accounts and. Uh, all these things and we got checking account.
How much?
There's some. Is that, uh, I would have to, I would have to.
It changes every month, so the, the month, we receive our subsidy from this. We receive our subsidy from the state in equal payments. They send it. The town collects all the taxes and holds it. And when money, when we're under budget, that fund balance sits in the town's account. Remember all the conversations last year about the interest? So that's because the, our money was sitting in their account. We got the interest on it. What happens every month is we um, we do have a payroll warrant, an AP warrant. They get signed, they get sent to Kathy Anarado. Over the years, this process has changed. You guys, you guys actually brought it up recently. And so Dennis was asking me about it and I researched how the process has changed. Um. And there have been, there's been a lot of turnover in my central office in finance people, right? So depending on who was there, it it changed not to how that process happened, but what basically happens is that each month Kathy and uh. Not my Kathy, Kathy Anarado will receive AP warrant from Shelley and a payroll warrant from Diane and. Um, she'll see how much money is in our checking account and she transfers over the amount we need to cover those bills and the town maintains the funds. Once upon a time. Um, the town gave us the local share in ten equal installments. When they did that, that's when Bernice used to be the treasurer and I was on the select board. That's when it changed. The town kept acting to take out tax anticipation notes to cover its bills because it was. Passing, sending us the money, sending the school district the money, whether the school district needed it or not. So they agreed to not do it that way to help with the town's cash flow. Now that's what that was all about. And so it's been different since then. Sometimes the payroll warrants have not even been sent. There's been an email that says I need this dollar amount and then from Shelley to Kathy and then Kathy transfers the money. Sometimes there's been a whole payroll warrant. Sometimes there's been a cover sheet. That's like a memo that gets scanned over. It's.
So going back to my. Uh, is it possible just to give? Another, I'm just gonna have second time.
So I can use, like the high school one, like it's, it's so fluctuating, right? So because it's like all the different classes have a chance, right? So then we go up into the big.
I can.
Anyways, my net goes with the air check. I thought we have a traveler, but that comes right back out. The thing at the same.
So there's no way.
A difference.
So how much? And that, I don't.
Oh, yeah, you could know how much it is, but it's gonna change. It's gonna, I mean, it's gonna change all the time. It's not like, it's not like a.
And there was those, that's, that's fine. Hopefully I can get that answer for actually, you know, for Russia.
I think she's looking it up for you.
And.
I can't look it up. I don't.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I'm gonna send Shelley an email.
That's what you're doing.
And tell me when the balance is tomorrow.
Yeah, we're.
That question.
Elementary school has a little check.
When these.
High school, they're all checked.
Doug?
I have a question about money moving in and out of accounts. Who signs the warrant when you ask for money or spend or pay bills?
You do. The new finance committee signs the warrants and I do.
Okay, but I, so. A quorum of the board doesn't sign?
Nope.
Okay, I'm just curious.
That's not how it's been done. We can look at all of that. And if you guys wanna change it, we can, but I don't think we have to. Dennis and I went back and forth. At length, I think because these guys bringing it up at the town, me and Dennis, I talk all the time, so.
I know with, with the slide board, three of the slide, we have to sign one.
But they.
They, they do.
But in ours.
I'm just wondering if three of us shouldn't sign the warrant, three eyes on. It's a quorum. I mean, they, they give me, he signed. I mean, we don't have to come in to do it. I mean, we just need. Basically, I'm just wondering. You know. The most boards, the board. Signs warrants. You present them, you pay the bills, tell us what you're paying, we sign it, there it goes. It's that simple. Same thing when you ask for money. I'm just, I'm just wondering how the process is going, but.
Um, the process is that the finance committee and superintendent sign the warrants. We can change the process if we'd like.
Yeah, no, that's.
Talk about it. Even if we kept it the same, we can still on our. Cause on a normal agenda, there's a finance committee update. Like I said, okay, these are the warrants for the month. These were the expense, my in and out, and this we.
In the past, um, we, the finance committee didn't sign the warrants before they got sent to the town to have the money transferred over. So they would, Shelley and Diane would just send the warrants over. And Kathy would transfer the money and they would pay the bills and then the finance committee would sign the warrants when they got together once a month. We don't have to do it that way. We could tighten that up and you guys can come and sign, you can stop in once a week and sign warrants.
Yeah. Yeah, and if one of us can't make it, then you know, one of the other board members can. You need more than one signature, I would think.
I talked to our attorney, Greg, him about it and technically the treasurer of the town is responsible. So if we wanted to, we could pass all of the money over to them and just let them pay our bills, but I don't advise that. I don't think it's a good idea and I think.
Well.
The best thing they would like us to pay their bills.
Well, I mean, it's, it's this warmth of stuff every day.
Well, we're talking about putting offices together. There's an efficiency.
Yes. That would be. Nice.
Alright, any other public comment?
I'm afraid so.
I'm afraid so.
I'm, I'm deeply briefed this.
Okay.
Global, we give, we. There are some web say. But um. I have to address. The trickery. Um. Uh. Question. You're absolutely right. There is this order of trickery because I think so this functioning board is now functioning. As a board. There was been underlying unknown. You took a lot of time tonight to explain a lot of things, but there's still the truth. Okay, it's there.
I heard your perception last time.
Make no mistake, there's still six thousand dollars. The phone that hasn't been explained. Doesn't matter. And then there was two thousand dollars that was. Set aside every budget and beginning of the time to pay school board members. That was taken out of the budget. You have to believe if you put a thousand dollars worth. Room desires out of the blue. I still think that's out of the way. Uh, I want to commend the board for being functional. This is the most work I have seen a board do in five years. In the last couple of meetings. I commend you. This is a win for moving this district forward. I thank every single one of you, of you doing this. I.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Huh, I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor? Alright, we're adjourned.
Yeah.
And then we have to sign.
The warrant. Yes, yes.
Don't walk away. You gotta sign the warrant.
Two copies.
You have a left-handed pen?